Hannah, you ready? Is Molly ready? Okay, let's get started. Poppa Day, this is the Guam EPA Board of Directors' regular meeting. Today is Thursday, October 2nd. The approximate time is four o'clock PM. This meeting is being recorded. Go on up room, Stephen Carvalho, Steve Carr. Steve Paul.
Fran Castro.
Thank you. And we have a quorum. A couple notices went out. Let's get this meeting started. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I'm sorry, on favor, I.
I.
Few motion passes. Next one, approval of the August 21st meeting minutes.
I just have on page three at the top, the very first paragraph of the seven things in the water table. I, I remember asking this question and getting it flat out in the middle. And that's, I just like that. Cause I asked, had there been any. It's Guam EPA aware of any separate things that have failed because the water table rises during the wet season? There's a flat out no. So I just want that, just want. Make sure we keep the line in.
Okay.
What page is that?
I mean, page three at the top. And that, that of course is above that. For you to have a good question.
I'll go back to the recording.
Thank you. Anything else? Let me know if there's a motion.
I move to approve the minutes as remembered.
On favor?
I. I.
Okay. We have a topic. I don't know if it's still relevant, but under void discussion, MCOG requests to extend its expenditure date. Is anyone here? Okay, hello.
Thank you. Do I need to be in the chamber or can I just check it? Um, first of all, thank you for allowing MCOG to appear before your. My name is Joy Dinarzal, and with me is Ms. Real. She's our accountant and Ms. Thomas, she's our administrative officer. We're here to, to kind of follow up with the letter that we sent to EPA on September 9th. And that was to ask for an exception request on the expenditure date for FY 2023 and FY 2024. I had to reset the development plan up until June 2023, 2026. And that's because we currently have invoices that we're trying to reconcile and pay down under those, those fiscal years. So that, that letter was sent to EPA on September 9th. Sure if you guys have a copy of this, but we're looking, we're looking at sending those expenditure dates. Additionally, I'm not sure if you already heard, but the council met, our MCOG council had met on September 24th. We have a special meeting and they had all concurred and voted that they want to go ahead and return the program back to EPA, which is the Islandwide Environmental cleanup. So effective FY 26 for returning the program back to.
So question, will that include only the $1.5 million from FY 25? And if the budget, current budget bill appropriated another 1.5, would you JV back that money to go on the case?
So for FY 2025, we're actually looking at spending what we can. We did put out a bid for abandoned vehicles. It's currently under, it was protested and it's with the OPA right now. So a decision hasn't been made. We awarded their disposal of tires and that's all FY 2025 funding. So most funding is good up until March 2026. So we plan to use that under the, this program. As far as 2026 funding, we won't. If it was put into our account, well, which I don't think it was.
We haven't established any accounts yet, so, but if that has to be established and then do a day.
But if, if you're giving the program back as of October 1st, 2025, then how would you spend that money if you're no longer doing that program?
So October 3rd is the new fiscal year, right? We're not doing, we're not going to run the program under this fiscal year. By 2025, you still will run the 2025 program because the money doesn't expire until March 2026. So the program would still be, the bid will still be good.
But if you're not, if you're not doing the program, it's like you're doing the program using old money, but if you're not doing the program, then you're not doing the program.
Cause that's just like any purchase order. You can cut the purchase order at the end of the fiscal year as long as you've spent it before. It's venture period, which would be like 90 days, 90 days out. I mean, that's, that's our understanding. We, we did kind of, we did, we did sign a bid for their disposal of tires. And we did cut the purchase order, I think, September 29th. And we do have, that is something we would be able to use. If, if the body does not want that, we'd be happy to return it then. I mean, however, this gets decided, but I could tell you, the council has voted and has, was very clear that we won't be running the program for FY 2026.
But I guess the question is, like who's making the decisions? Cause essentially, if I'm understanding this correctly, we're going to be hamstrung in terms of the amount of money that we can use because of these, like the votes or whatever the decisions are now. But then, so we're sort of taking the program back with all of these other requirements that were already decided and these expenditures that were decided that we're not having any control over whether we do them. So is that right?
No, there's, there's like the activities in FY 26, but it's using FY 25.
Yes, is that, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's okay.
That's, that's, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay. But the plan that we're sticking with, that we've engaged was in the 2025. So we won't be renewing, therefore we won't, or we won't, we're returning back the program. So we won't need to move with the 2026.
But we gave you, we allotted 25, 2025, you and you do a job. And so now I'm confused.
So.
I mean, when was the last time we gave money?
So they allocated money October 1st of the, of the fiscal year 2025.
Right.
Uh, $1.5 million.
So we received that money on January 10th, 2025. So it's, or, um, no. So this is how it works, right? The money gets deposited into our account into MCOG. We won't be able to procure at all or start a bid until money is identified. So the money was deposited in January 2025. We did the market research. So we did a bid. This is, this is the first time MCOG has done a bid for such service, which should have always been the case. Because it's the same, it's one lot, one description, same services, right? We can't be by repaying, we're correct. So we did a bid. I'm sorry, I don't have the timeline to, you know, I'm trying to remember this as best as I can. We, we got, we did the, I'm sorry, the scope of work was completed and signed off by the end user on February. We advertised or we did a market research on February, scope was planned in March. We sent it to the AG's office in May and we received it back on June. This is phase one. I don't, I don't want to confuse you guys, but phase one allows us to go and publish the bid. We did that and we, we advertised it on June 4th and that's when the bids started coming in. We opened up on July 9th. And then we awarded and then that's with protesting. So we were pretty quick with it. So the money came in on June 10th, we were pretty quick with that. It's a, it's a, we, because history shows that just on the abandoned vehicle alone, it's over half a million. Therefore, it requires the AG of review and approval. So that was, you know, that was the, that was kind of, that's the process and we follow the process.
So you will expend the $1.5 million by March of 2026?
We don't know yet, cause we have, we have a protest going on right now. It's sitting in within the AG's office. And until that protest is lifted, then we can move forward with the procurement.
So if that money isn't spent by March of 2026, will that money be given back to only the?
Absolutely. Cause we can't spend it. Yeah. So that's the bulk of the expenditure is your, is the abandoned vehicles. The remaining shows it's all. The whole group of tires, the white clothes. And then the greenways and the metal.
Well, no roughly where you are now.
So we have, so we just awarded the tires of that just last week. And I just, I guess it's important for me to inform you guys that the permanent vendors for these type of services or goods, right? They're, they, they're reluctant to participate in the bids or to give up because of payments, prior payments. And again, that's why I'm here, because I'm asking to consider the extension expenditure date for FY 2023 and FY 2024. Cause we do have a lot of invoices coming in with these services that were going to be doing those for four years.
Doesn't the budget bill for those fiscal years allow you to spend that money on the other one? So that you don't really need the extension from us? Cause the budget bill says FY 24, three funds and FY 24 funds can be used until it's.
So right now it's under a request and so when we try to commit, a MCOA says it expires.
So the request, the work request ties in a start date and an ending.
Yeah.
For the expenditure, because we're the mother agency, the work request is the one that finds the start date and ending.
So what do you want the, how, how far do you want the extension for FY 2025 or 23 and 24? Like how, so what do you project June 30, 2026? So you want the extension until June 30, 2026?
Yeah, this, this really would allow us to just kind of pay our outstanding invoices. Will that include FY 2025? So FY 2025, we were, we didn't set the current agreement that we had to be, that it expired till March 2026. So as we come closer to that, they may need to come back to, cause you know, again, it's, it's under, it's under OCA. Yeah, I can't really, I can't tell you where that's going to go, how long that's going to take. Sometimes protests can take one year, sometimes, you know, month. I don't. Tell you where that goes, but as we approach the day, we can keep you guys informed. Because our, our, our plan was ready to spend these monies and our hope was to bid this out as an IDIQ. So GSA themselves can write off. So that's the reason why we, we were hoping that we get some good, you know, good feedback on it. And we were there, we were close and then. I know that EPW and GPD were looking at, you know, they were looking at our bid, so we were looking at it right. And MCOG has their own authority to prepare. So and you don't go to GSA.
I have a question. If your, your protest gets lifted and it goes through, would the other agency be able to write on your IDIQ? Yes, such as GPW, GSWA, or even Guam EPA?
We made it an IDIQ, but here's, here's the, so here's the, the second, here's the other barrier is, is getting vendors to need to participate. So that was a two item bid. So the first item was to transport, the second was to dispose, right? And what we found was on the disposal side, really, which is really what we need, right? The permitted vendors, the permitted vendors by EPA are reluctant to participate because of previous history. So we were, we were trying to restore that. That's what we're trying to look for. Hopefully, when it comes to return the rest, we should.
For FY 23, it's $280,000 approximately. So have these funds already been spent in 23 or it rolls over to 24, then it rolls over to 25?
It doesn't roll. It's sitting. We, we were, we were going to ask to lift it so we can expand it. We didn't realize that the council was just gonna say, you know, to, we're going to return the program. So we had, we had plans to move or at least work with these figures that was not expended, but unfortunately, we won't be able to do that today.
Oh, so we're not even talking about the rollover of funds to expend those monies by June 30, 2026? We're talking about stuff that was spent in 2023 that you guys haven't paid yet. How come we haven't paid it?
Well, I can't. I know it was sent to DOA and.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we learned of this one, when I, I mean, I did the market research myself. I went out to hold it at what vendors we can secure for these bids. Because it's, it's, it's a, it's a need, not just with MCOG, but other agencies that, but you know, and Connie said, so we hope that we were able to secure and get everybody to write up. But that, that just didn't happen.
Okay, so there's FY 23 services were provided in FY 23 that haven't been paid out yet. And you're asking for the expenditure end date to be June 2026 to be able to pay those vendors, same for FY 24.
So when we did our market research, that's when we started coming out to us with all their invoices.
So is Guam EPA in agreement, like whatever we call it, closing out the year and that still needs to be paid or?
You're asking me, yes?
Yeah.
I mean, we've been working, I've been working with Joy and her team for, since thinking on board and, you know, we're doing as much as we can to assist them and support them in getting the vendors paid. I hear what she's coming with about vendors not reluctant to get into purchase orders with the government because of lack of payment. And it's sometimes beyond us, we're not the ones processing people. So I, I'm in agreement with that.
And they already, I mean, the money is there.
The money's there, so they can pay the, the vendors, rightfully so, and they did provide the services.
So given that the budget bill allowed, Kristen, a budget bill allowed the money to be technically rolled over, is it the board's, is it the board's decision? Or is it just Guam EPA to provide the extension letter?
Um, I'm not sure. But it's, it's not, I mean, the funds weren't really rolled over, right? They're just allowed to continue, right?
Right. I don't know. It's just like, I don't know. The vendors need to get paid if the services were provided. I don't know if it's required by law that the board has to discuss it. Because the board wasn't involved in this June 2025 date, whatever it is, but it was requested. So here we are. Like the board didn't determine this expenditure end date on this form. I don't know if it's a requirement for the board to.
So we can just, we can just extend the letter, I mean, provide the extension letter. But that's a good.
Yeah, we're, we're, services were rendered.
I think so.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, in regard to the FY 27, because you guys are not, you guys have voted not to do it. Um, I guess we have it on record here that you guys are, will not be accepted in the FY 26 funds. And we will, I, I let her know before. Okay, so that you have a perfect, I just wanted to meet you then, inform you guys in that, you know.
I recall reading something in a paper, what was the, the main focus of their argument not to do it?
Meaning for not to do which one?
Or continue with the program.
Um, to be honest, it's, it's a lot of work involved in this program and it requires, you know, it's, it requires staff, equipment, their vehicle, their wear and tear. It's, it's a lot of work. I mean, even with our office, we actually have to three months, because I mean, that's, I mean, we're overseeing a $1.5 million program. Part of it. And we're only getting that money to utilize for the service alone. It doesn't cover initiative costs. It doesn't cover, you know, vehicles. It doesn't cover supply, none of that. So, yeah, it's, it's.
Yeah, I mean, centralizing this probably is not going to solve the problem. I mean, I would think that the mayor will, at least in the community, is getting that stuff picked up and they can focus on it better than centralized. Just cause you know, you always see the mayor's out there, you know.
I mean, they would know it best to exactly, right? But it's been a struggle for them. And it is a lot of, as far as administrative work, they, it's, they were working their, their staff. It's, it's a lot of involvement. It's not just a, it's a prize. It's really just funded at 1.5.
It's same here and it's, it's been important. And employees to do the same that we appear in EPA, just don't have the bodies to do the work, the resources.
Yeah, well, but the problems remain.
Yes, and, but that's their side. That's why, why they, what their reason was.
I mean, I always viewed it good, you know, cause I, you know, when they, somebody wants a job, leave the job, the mayor, hey, come here, help clean up, you know.
I wish it was a simple adapter, but I'm getting married.
Oh, no, I know it's a lot of work, but I'm, I just, they're closer to the community to able to assess these things and, and deal with it. So it's too bad. I understand why that, but I think it doesn't help us or.
Yeah, I mean, it seems like just like a hot potato, right? Because no, no one really has, I, I mean, do we need more money for, like, how, how do we fix it? I mean, we can't just keep like, you know, putting it with this group. They don't have the resources, the man, whatever it is, and it goes to this group. They don't have the, you know, and in the meantime, we have all these abandoned vehicles, leaking oil, you know, it's really, it's a serious problem. So I mean, how do we solve it? I guess is the question. Is it?
Well, that's a hard one, Heather.
Well, I mean, is it just money? Like, I mean, honestly, like, I mean, I know the money was, but I mean, what, what is it going to take to solve it? Right? Cause we already have like the experience. I mean, I, I agree with you. I, I think that the mayor's, the mayor's and the villages do a phenomenal job of being in touch with all of the folks there. They're the first people that you go to for any number of different things. They know where people are. They know the hotspots in their own village. They know all these things. You know, that's a great resource, but you know, if they don't have the resources, they can't do it. Um, but what, how do we fix this? Can it be fixed? Or we just sort of.
Please picture by next meeting.
No, I mean, that's.
So under the law, the MCOG is authorized to remove abandoned vehicles. Also, another agency that's authorized on the law is EPW. So this just came in before 5:00 PM. It's DPW's abandoned vehicle cleanup program. So we're going to present it on the next topic.
Okay, after the administrative report.
All right. Are we good? Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'll turn it over to you, Michelle.
Thank you, Chairman. So made a couple of adjustments. So maybe we just make the note. So as of October 2nd, we have 55 full-time employees. That includes attorney Finning, who is back on board as a Guam. And then during this emergency declaration for the other contamination, we do have one temporarily assigned staff from the governor's office who will serve as our acting PIO. And that's Mr. Don Sulet. I don't know if you seen that. Yeah. So I'll have him introduce himself, please, go back in office. So we're still trying to recruit for the public information officer. That's on a continuous announcement. So DOA does not have a certified list to give us. And then in the water division, it's the one more environmental technician. We're still recruiting for three, three engineer, one positions, and then one environmental health specialist. Agency headquarters building negotiations are complete, but the contract for the evening is still down at the ECU office. It's been there since, until 8, 2025. We had the public hearing on the proposed on site wastewater treatment and disposal system regulations for residential subject tank and reaching systems and to for your toilet facilities. We have that on July 30th, 2025, at four. So I believe that our being has the board resolution about to finalize. Which, which one? For the toilet systems?
It's, okay.
And that's for. This is Mr. Don Sulet. He's our acting PIO. And he will be with us. He's on a temporary assignment for 90 days to help us with public outreach for the DL contamination. This is our board. Chairman Carvalho, Director Carrara.
Vice Chairman.
The Vice Chairman, I'm sorry. Director Kedigla. Director Hollister, and then online is Director Castro. So programs, partnerships, projects, GWAA, DPA, DPHS, DL in response. So on September 12th, the Guam Water Works Authority issued a 21 advisory notification to those affected customers that are, that get water from distribution well, Y15. I'm sure this is old news because we were supposed to have this meeting a couple of weeks ago. So notifications were sent out because they exceeded the action level that the board approved. That took effect on August 1st. So those notifications were mailed out to affected GGO customers in the Santa Rosa area in GGO because it exceeded the running annual average for DL, which was over 0.2 parts per billion. So then Guam EPA, GWAA, DPHSS sent out a joint press release. And then we held a town hall meeting on Thursday, September 18th at the GGO gym museum. And then if you skip to the back, I provided that the updates to that. So there was 1,112 affected customers in that September 12th notification. And then shortly after, Acting Governor Chavilla declared a state of emergency over DL contamination. We allocated $250,000 to GWAA to procure these point of entry filters, which is the whole home. So you're going to hear, you're going to hear terms like point of use, which is for a single faucet or spigot. And then point of entry or POEs are the whole house systems that are connected after the meter. So that emergency declaration was to procure those point of entry filters and then other supplies for those affected households. So then following a request or a letter that was sent to US EPA's acting regional, region nine administrators, they responded by saying that US EPA would be providing assistance through funding for those treatment systems, technical support for compliance, and then guidance on the thing that do not drink without treatment advisory. Additionally, they committed to providing funding, not necessarily provide funding, but approve the use of funding they already get as part of their state revolving grants. So they get, they get money already from US EPA. So they redirected that money that was allocated for other departments to be used to purchase these short-term fixes, like these point of use devices or point of entry systems. And then also to help procure the long-term permanent solution. Um, and then also to help procure the long term permanent solution of this um, granular activated carbon or these G A C systems for that well remediation. So the latest update is that G W A is installing two smaller G A C systems from two other wells that no longer need it. And they are transporting and installing those G A C systems that Y fifteen. Um, and that's expected to be completed by tomorrow. Um, so that should actually be up and running hopefully by tomorrow, if not this weekend. Um, so, uh, G W A is also, um, they developed this reimbursement plan, right, to purchase, install, and reimburse um, very clear, I'm sorry, those affected customers to purchase and install or reimburse people who have these systems. So these whole house P O Es, um, are estimated about twenty seven hundred dollars per unit. That's not including installation. So G W A will have to perform pre piping uh, to these homes. And so that when the units become available from the vendor, then they will be easier to connect. Um, also, uh, G G, I mean, Guam E P A is reviewing a proposal uh, to a change in their operational plan that would take about three hundred affected customers off of that Y uh, fifteen, uh, distribution. So they're gonna actually shut up a valve, uh, so that water is not being distributed to those three hundred homes. And then water will come in from another well that's not. So that's the update on that. Um, and then other things that, uh, we've had on our plate. So we did have a, uh, child led poisoning investigation. So that was, um, we were notified on August twenty ninth uh, that a child that was reported with elevated blood lead levels and then requested an environmental assessment. So then we coordinated inspections of faucets, which took samples from those faucets. Um, sorry, scheduled to take water from those faucets, but there was no water service at the residence. There was no water sample that were taken. But then we did take our X R F equipment, um, and that is used to test things like paint on walls, toys, flooring, furniture, kitchenware, outdoor fixtures, and yard contents. And what we found was that the floor tiles contain lead levels of above, uh, the five thousand ppm, uh, which is the federal threshold using, uh, formal lead based paint inspections. So this is really a screening. It's not confirmatory, um, by the use of this X R F. Um, and then two of the four siblings living at the home also tested positive for elevated blood level. So we're following up on that issue, but the only thing that tested uh, high was the the floor tiles. Um, the U S Army for engineers, area one oh one, so that this most staff met with the Army for and the update to other flood sites on September twelfth. So they did a site walkthrough of area one oh one, which is the on out area, which is actually the same area as the D L green. So, uh, San Rosa on our point. Uh, so the site is moving into this R I F F S phase and fieldwork, and that's expected to begin February twenty twenty six. And so Parsons Corporation has been awarded the remedial investigation feasibility study or that R I F S uh, work until twenty thirty. Uh, so they conducted a site visit with Army four team, um, also at Pago Bay Range, which is area one oh four, one oh six, and one oh eight, which is the Camp Dealey and the Chelan Park. Uh, the Green Parcels Program, they went, uh, to the twenty twenty five California Land Recycling Conference in Carson, California. Um, also, they, um, talked about the F Y twenty six brownfield job training grant. And so they are working with G C C and the Department of Labor as potential recipients of this grant. And so sample courses, um, you could read through that. So there's a lot of of training that could be made available through G C C and then partner with Department of Labor to actually provide jobs um, uh, with those folks having been trained with these courses. Uh, they keep a dream drone program certification that's to be announced. So we did submit, uh, Green Parcel Staff nominations, uh, in July. And so, uh, we are in communication with the Y O G NASA space grant, uh, program, uh, regarding, uh, those courses. Um, and then this month, I'm sorry, last month, with twenty twenty five national preparedness multi-grant nationality. And the Green Parcels Program, as always, did a great job holding community outreach at the again uh, safe drinking water program. They conducted sanitary surveys at the U S Navy, Anderson Air Force Base, G R M C, and the Bonfire Port. And so, uh, also, um, we were informed that under this water infrastructure improvements for the nation or this win uh, small underserved and disadvantaged communities grant, um, that we were given, um, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and then although we've done the Yodron update. And then inspections, um, broken by, broken down by category, we did two hundred and seventy nine inspections. Um, and this type thing, which is actually, um, I didn't calculate the the remaining two weeks. Um, and then permits. We issued a total of three hundred and thirty. And subject to questions, Chairman.
Thank you. Open it up. Questions, comments?
Is there any effort to try and figure out the cause of the Yodron contamination by the particular well versus?
Um, so we've had almost daily calls with U S E P A, and they did request whether or not there was any grant money that was available to um, do a serve us, to do a study. We have our suspicions.
Uh, everyone has suspicions. Okay, so, um, we, and even this morning, we talked with U S E P A and G W A about at least doing assessments and like soil surveys. One of the big questions we keep getting is, is it safe to eat crops that are grown in G I O in that area? We know crops uptake deodorant, it bioaccumulates in some more than others, and in some places of some plants more than other places, right? So some it'll be in the roots instead, and some it'll be in the roots. Um, we have uh, authorization to use some of our grant money, but also G W A has offered to assist us in some of that sampling and testing. So, uh, talk with DOAG today and G W A. We're gonna like put our heads together to try and design like at least a a study that will give us data that's useful, not just data to have data, right? Um, but we, I think there's a bigger, like, there's a lot of sampling we could do. We know that we have with limited data, there's deodorant in Tumon Bay. We just had a T M D O group for that, I I think earlier this year. Um, we know that from previous sampling that it's in, like, at a rotate. There are several sites where we have collected data that we know there's deodorant. So you know, when we think about the source, the big problem is that it was so widely used. And certainly in the Pacific Islands. But it was used commercially, it was used privately, it was certainly used by the Department of Defense. Um, and we've looked at, there are only, I think, four or five other states that have interaction levels for deodorant. And in all of those cases, it was either the site of manufacture, so it was easy to say, they just manufactured here. Um, or they haven't been able to trace it, right, because of the ubiquitous. Um, so we're working on that. But I, it's gonna be like, have to be an island wide adventure if we're gonna say, oh, it's really right here and maybe right here, but um, it's gonna be a sticky look. I I don't know that we're actually gonna be able to to say. Um, I started looking into some of the Agent Orange work because, you know, from sixty two to eighty one, if you were stationed here, you get the automatic check from the B A, right? And so, um, I'm gonna look into to see how that happened. Because in theory, they're saying there's no proof that D O D did it, but it's a, you know, prevent or it's bears, it's a check. So um, I'm gonna look into some of that and Public Health and DOAG are are working on that as well. So but I I don't think it's gonna be easy to identify a source.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, you know, there are two problems with that, right? One is, I mean, I'm mostly just concerned that you identify it for the purpose of preventing, you know, it going anywhere else. And then the other is, well, it's all dirty, then you should be cleaning up.
For sure.
Paying for that. But in the immediate future, it's really about the health and how do we keep how do we keep people safe.
So, yeah, so we know it's very persistent in the soil. But in tropical conditions, it should break down faster than a dozen non tropical conditions. Um, half life is like five years. It's been banned since nineteen eighty seven in the United States. It is still aldren, which turns into deodorant as it breaks down, um, is still widely used in Southeast Asia. So, um, we have worked with our pesticides team. We're gonna, um, between them and DOAG, we're gonna go do some inspections with the farms that are in the area. Um, but again, but we know at least around the well is localized, and that's not necessarily farm area. We do know there's a lot of runoff. There's a lot of like home construction and and reconstruction just over a fence line. Um, but again, it was really widely used as a termiticide and as a pesticide for farmers. So um, we're gonna see what we can find out.
Can you say half life for five years?
In the soil, generally speaking, according to the World Health Organization. And I, again, I haven't checked all of their data yet, but um, in some of the the information I have. I talked to A T S D R. I have a call scheduled with Public Health and A T S D R tomorrow morning at six thirty. Um, so I'm gonna see what information they have, but I mean, I have a ton of information about it, just environmentally. There's relatively limited information. The only studies I could find about crops, there was like maybe four that I found. Um, most of them were done in Japan. Um, so there's just very limited data because it's been banned for so long and it was never regulated by U S E P A.
Not a lot of farming up there, I don't think. Well, ranches have been farming.
Well, so there's, there's thirty four agricultural paths and for G W A to have an agricultural path, you have to be like a, you have to have a certificate being a bona fide farmer from DOAG. Um, we know there's at least four commercial farms. There's a bunch that are listed as commercial farms, but with DOAG, um, they said there's four that they know that are active, like big commercial farms, not just listed as commercial farm. So that's part of what our next steps are with DOAG is going out and saying, okay, how much farming is happening? What's the, you know, total volume of of produce that's actually coming into the market? Or are people, this is like, my husband and I are bona fide farmers, but we're not putting produce into the market in Guam, right? We just have a lot of stuff thrown in our yard.
So we did reach out.
Mostly going in the air.
It is mostly going to the insects that keep eating my squashes. Now, it's my squashes and tomatoes and peppers.
We did reach out to U S F D A that stationed here in Guam to see whether or not they could test pesticide residue um, in the the food and vegetable crops. Um, so they haven't had much luck in sending, um, samples out. So even if they use dry eyes, by the time it gets to the, uh, laboratory, it's just not a useful sample. So they're still kind of working out that protocol to see whether or not we can actually send samples out of fruits and vegetables to see whether or not it's deodorant.
Which is further reason to support the laboratory that I want to build for Guam E P A.
That's what you get for passing the regulations. Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
Right? Or I have a question in terms of uh, for your picture. What's your status on the other P W Ss is, uh, we have to start sampling and get a annual average, right?
Uh, so so we have decided that, you know, between October first and December thirtieth, which is the first quarter, um, we're gonna look at those results and kind of make a determination um, about notification. And not official notification because they don't have a twelve month rolling average. But I think that one of the criticisms at that town hall was if there's an exceedance, then the community should at least know. So, um, depending on what the results are from those P W Ss, we're going to provide information. And but it's not necessarily gonna trigger the tier one or two to notification requirement for, I mean, for those P W Ss because they don't have four quarters of data to, um, calculate the running average.
Yes, it is.
We also know that Anderson Air Force Base has already pulled, um, their first samples. They pulled them by the end of September. Um, so we, we're kind of moving faster than, you know, between October and December for their first quarter to pull data. So, you know, let's start it.
Okay, uh, next one, status reports. Um, we discussed M C O G, our program, uh, on the agenda, DPW's program, anything to discuss?
So they did provide me their, um, operational plan and expenditure plan. Um, so I did reach out, reminded them of today's board meeting. And I guess it was a miscommunication, uh, about presenting it in person today. Um, so I said, okay, she has a, they have a conflicting schedule. Um, so I I just said that I would provide the board with their plan. So they're gonna request for two million dollars. Um, so their expenditure plan actually breaks down, um, the resources they need, which is the equipment operator and then their their, um, heavy equipment that's needed to load um, to load the, uh, abandoned vehicles. And I think they're only going to uh, focus on abandoned vehicles. So unlike M C O G, that also did white goods, tires, freeways, electronic ones, they're they're only gonna focus on tires. And so that is people's.
Okay. Um, so we'll review this over the next month, like, at the next meeting, but yeah, just probably they should comply with the same requirements of the M C O G program. So kind of talked about it was Connie. So the the plan should include basically S O Ps and it's, uh, itemized in the law, like invoicing procedures and stuff like that. So, uh, you probably also review it to make sure it checks those boxes.
Right.
Over steps at next meeting.
Okay.
Um, like one question, when you bring a car in, uh, like a new car to get registered, is there like a pretty associated with the ultimate vehicle disposal?
Yeah, I think we talked about that before. It's like tacking on and tack on the pre, like a predisposal.
Yeah, because I I I think in Palau, we used to do that. Like, if you brought a car in, the first time you registered, you had to pay, you know, a couple hundred bucks, whatever. Just to make sure that there was, and it funded this pool to take care of these cars.
I think we could probably have some creative solutions, right? Like, and I'm sure we can talk offline, like in the agency about some things that have been floating around my head the last couple of weeks, but
Maybe you can suggest it to Senator.
Wasn't that what the original substance of to do that? They, when we they set that up pur- purposely for taking care of cars.
I think the original fund was abandoned vehicle fund, but now it's the R R F. So that is inclusive of all the, you know, the park integrated solid waste and the priorities, which is, you know, that.
Yeah, because we changed that. Because originally it was just a car. And then you had people asking for money. And then
Right, so that's twenty five dollars every, um, registration.
I mean,
which is tapped tapped on to your registration.
I just think that if we look at the numbers here, so if it's gonna cost like a little over thirteen hundred dollars for each abandoned vehicle, being twenty five dollars, I I don't know. Being twenty five dollars, I I don't know, it it just seems like, you know, really, we should set our our sights a little higher, but. I think that maybe we need to work with D R T in terms of the registration. I know that there was recent legislation about. Notarize, I I I have to apologize, I can't even remember what happened to that legislation, but. Um, you know, in California, when you, when you sell a car to someone, you have to fill out a little postcard. Both of you and you send it in to the D M D and then they know that like I no longer own that car, you own the car. And so you have to do that every single time. And so when, when they find a car that's banned, then it's. Uh, then they know it's not my car anymore, it's your car, you're the one that's responsible. And so I just feel like maybe we need to tighten up on that side of things. A little bit more so that. We can hopefully have the resources to, you know, now doesn't. All of it turns out that the car's been stolen three different times or used for drugs. Something or the people have left out and they'll just abandon it. But if there's some way, you know, to tighten up those, those regulations as well, I think. So that that helped us.
Bill did pass, so now when you sell a car, there it has to be a notarized bill of sale.
Right, but it's also, there was some controversy about that because D R T thought it was very.
Right? Was there a pause? I don't, I don't.
There's no pause on it. I mean, I, it affected me when that bill came out with this tax, I was gonna do a transfer of ownership of the vehicle that I got.
Right.
And it's based on the taxes or how much you pay for the transfer of ownership.
Right.
Depending on the cost you bought the vehicle, you could buy the vehicle for a dollar, up to ten thousand dollars, and they do the percentage of that cost. To to how much you're gonna pay to transfer the ownership.
Right, because it used to be two percent of the blue book value of this vehicle is how much you would.
How? The cost would be.
Of transferring that vehicle.
Yeah.
I mean, for example, on that, we just did one car with pay twenty five hundred. The transfer of ownership costs one seventy some, and then I did another car, dollar, bought it for a hundred dollars. Transfers ownership, only a dollar.
Yeah, right. I mean, anyway.
I like it. Yeah, so I, I think like. Back to what I wasn't gonna talk about, Tony Alakani. I I think that we could work with D R T and like, the numbers, can't just get rid of them. Right? Like you can get rid of one, but they're stamped in the metal all through the car, right? So. I think it would take a little more effort, but I think that, you know, we could. Probably work out something where like if this car belonged to someone from D O D and they've abandoned it, then maybe we. Send a bill to J R M. I don't know. I think that, I think we could look into some ways that we might be able to handle that a little bit better.
Yeah, because I mean, I just think that, you know, maybe there's, you know, some way to work with D R T on a process that separately. I I I don't know, but I think that if we can tighten it up on that side, that would be really great. Um. And uh. You know, the other thing is that, I mean, I don't know, you know, maybe you have a program where the the first, the person who notices an abandoned vehicle gets some kind of. You know, fries or something, you know, some financial stuff, because the problem is that a lot of these vehicles, they show up and then they're just there. Burning us along and that does give people the opportunity to strip that, right? Anyway, that's just, yeah, burn them and live in there.
Attractive nuisance.
Yeah, yeah. So.
And I found many car parts on abandoned.
Yeah.
That one guy seeing the newspaper or at least on Facebook, Serge. He's cleaning up a lot of cars and that car, he's a contractor, I guess, he posts all the cars he cleans up.
Where did he go?
I don't know where he's bringing them, but he's hauling them out of places that. And he's a well-known guy, I'm saying his name wrong, but uh.
I'm gonna have to search.
Maybe he's working for D P W or something, I don't know, he's cleaning this up.
So D P W actually already uh collects cars off of right aways and basements and public roads, so there are. I think this um expenditure plan, so we will have to develop an M L A, submit to M C O G. So that they can come um to the board and request for monies out of the R R F as opposed to. Them just using their, their department money.
Yeah, that's so true.
What?
And does he have a collection for it?
I use everywhere, I mean, picking up these cars, that was like, great. Here, Teja needs to pick them. Thanks. Um, next one, this is an old topic, but we just have never gotten to it, we do have rules and rights we've been discussing, but it's. E P A water sampling results. Do you wanna discuss this or? Table it?
We just have a quick presentation.
Okay.
Do you need a PowerPoint?
Yeah.
And what was Kathleen was asking about?
I just need that for the livestream.
Okay, so this is the U S E P A Region Nine Airfield Safety Event, this was back in February, from February third to eight seven. I'm Nicole Diers, uh, you can access here. Okay. So there's a quick summary, um, back in February of this year, Guam E P A Region Nine Enforcement and Compliance Assurance Division. Came out to Guam and worked with us, the Guam E P A Safe Drinking Water Program, we conducted um. On drink test pursuant to the Safe Drinking Water Act, and this was funded by the United States American Rescue Plan Act of twenty twenty one. So they collected for PFAS and pesticides at four public water systems. This was G W A North, uh, the airport, Guam Plaza, uh, G R M C. Um, and so uh G W A North, they collected for PFAS and pesticides. And for the other three, they only sampled for PFAS.
Okay, so I'll talk us through the PFAS summary. Um, again, this is all our work, this is from U S E P A and their deliverables to us and now they're giving to G W A. Um, this is just the summary at the end of their report, so. Four systems, right, so it's the four that Nicole just mentioned, seventy two samples overall. And then nine analysts per, per sample, um, so P F O A, they had six M C L exceedances, P F O S twenty three. These are not actual M C L, but it hasn't gone to perfect yet, but they are assuming. Um, and then H F P O V A or Gen X, zero M C L exceedances, and for P F B S, P F N A. And then eight M C L exceedances for P F H excess. And then for the hazard index, nine M C L exceedances, and then this for reference. The hazard index is a mixture of two or more chemicals, so that includes H F P O V A or Gen X, P F B S, P F N A and P F H excess. So then we'll go to the maps, all provided by U S E P A. Um, so this is all the PFAS together, that was just in that chart, combined together um in nanograms per liter. Um, so I guess it's kind of hard to see. Okay, um, but the darker, okay, Nicole's looking at it, but it's okay. Measure general life span, it's just kind of great.
Sorry.
Um, I don't know if you guys, you can sell this, mostly there's a lot more in central Guam, there is some up north and darker spots, but. And then it'll break down into the different PFAS, Nicole. So starting with P F O S. Um, right, not, not too much of more, like mostly, mostly central in the central area. Um, highest is sixty two point zero nanograms per liter. Next one, P F O A, um, less than P F O S, um, in general. Again, the highest spot is in central Guam, the highest is fourteen point five zero nanograms per liter. P F H excess, um, similar story, again, um, there is one, one spot up there in Daedado that is higher, but. Mostly in central Guam, the highest at thirty point eight nanograms per liter, and this is just one sample off. Again, for M C L, it would be over the four quarter average, so. Um, P F N A, we related the, not, not very current here, um. Yeah, next, P F B S, um, this one, the highest is fifty three point eight zero nanograms per liter. P F B S is actually does not have its own M C L, it's part of the hazard index, and so their index is over two thousand parts per billion. So really at fifty three, this is not a, not a. That's one, hazard index, again, it's a mixture of the two chemicals together, it's not a nanograms per liter, it's actually unitless, it's a mixture. Um, but the highest that we do have is three point oh eight nanograms. Three out of that one, the one is the, one is the M C L. And then we did not include the graph for Gen X or H F P O V A because there is none, which is enough of your.
And next we have the summary, overall summary for pesticides. So there was only one system that was sampled and that was G W A North. And out of a total of fifty three samples, there were six that were non-detected with the average number of analytes detected per sampling being two. Um, for deodorant, there is no M C L, U S E P A used our interim action level of zero point two and zero point five parts per billion. As an M C L exceedance, therefore, there were two detections that were over our interim action level. Uh, the maximum sample result was one point five zero um parts per billion. Um, endrin, hexachloro, oxide, and pentachlorophenol have no M C L exceedances. And then we'll go to the map for pesticides, so despite how it looks, um. All of the circles are not zero point eight, so the, the way they plotted this, the bigger the circle, the higher the level, so the smaller circles are. Uh, a low sample result while the bigger one is the highest, was the one point five zero. And that's.
Thank you. Any N O B S issues since last meeting? Anyone have any other comments or questions?
The resolution. Yes.
Uh, okay, that's the end of the meeting, um, next, oh, we have to wait till we have a purchase order in place to schedule on next year, so. Things scheduled at the moment. Okay, great, so. So there's two. Probably not gonna have a meeting in two weeks, so regularly in November. Sounds like a plan to me unless we do something. Okay. Um. Then you're gonna run Thanksgiving. About. I'm gonna find one for Thursday. We'll schedule that. Yeah, second Thursday. Yes. Well, I'm pretty well on schedule, I don't know. Okay, is there motion to adjourn? I'll make a motion to adjourn, second. On favor, hi, thank you, everybody.
Hi, thank you, take care.